Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call our first meeting of the 2023 Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, January 10th. I'd like to start out with a roll call. Let's do that. For those present in the Nat U Hill Room, we'll start to my right. Counselor Hawke.
Present.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Here.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
And on line, Counselor Iverson.
Here.
And although it's not on the agenda, we will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was a resounding chorus. Now, we have the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda? All right, then, we do not have any changes. Fantastic. Yes.
I need to amend the agenda.
Oh, never mind. We might have an amendment.
Apparently, I need to amend the agenda to clarify our salary ordinance in regards to the 2023 retention bonus.
Is that... Where will that be? Where is that? What number?
It's not on there.
So you're adding it?
Yes.
And is there a particular spot?
I mean, we can do it at the end if you'd like.
We can do it at the end.
Counsel, I move we add item D or item... Let's see, is it... Yeah, well, we have the item... Yeah, sorry. Item 12D, Retention Bonus Clarification.
Why D?
I don't think the D is necessary, but...
I think it's item 9D.
Oh, 9D.
It's 9D, okay.
Sorry.
Because if you look at the agenda...
8D, right before the approval of summary minutes would be kind of the last...
8D.
You know what we're doing.
Oh, it is 8D. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was looking at the number of the... Yeah, the other numbering system.
Yep. Salary ordinance. Okay. Motion for 8D, second.
Second.
And we need to do a roll call vote for that since we've got it online.
Sorry.
No worries.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Fantastic. And next on the agenda is public comment, and this is for items that are not on our agenda for the evening. And if there are any members of the public who would like to make comments, please come to the podium or raise your hand online. All right, I see nobody. So we will move then to item number four, which is department updates. Do we have any departments? It looks like the sheriff is here to speak to us. Welcome, and if you'd sign in and then say your name, and we know who you are, but protocol.
Good evening, everyone. I'm the sheriff of Monroe County. The main purpose that I wanted to come and talk to you this evening, I wanted to introduce you to my executive staff, which is Chief Deputy is Phil Parker. Jail Commander is Kyle. Matt is the Assistant Jail Commander. I believe everyone knows Randy already, correct? And everyone knows Russell. Who doesn't know Russell? So everybody knows Russell. But Kyle, come up for a minute. Kyle is the new jail commander, and we're very proud to make some changes. I'd like Kyle to really explain to you what we've been doing. We've been trying to think outside the box based on what we observed from the past actions. So our instruction to Kyle was, please, go ahead and make some changes. I know for us, it's just our beginning of a second week, but we wanted to get things moving fairly quickly. So I'll leave the floor to Kyle.
Hello. Ready to sign in as well?
I don't think for department. Does he have to sign in? Okay, you're good.
Perfect. Well, understanding the sheriff's obligation to communities to keep it safe, and sometimes it starts in the jail. So what we're trying to do is... Go ahead.
Sorry, can you adjust that mic so that we can hear better?
Is that better? What we're... Primarily, our interests are providing programs, cleaning it up, making it a place where we can reduce recidivism through programs like that. So like, when they come in, there was a process before that was standard, coming through Sallyport, you come into the booking area, and we walked in day one, and we're like, this is not going to work. It's not going to work because it's not appealing to human nature. We're not... We're really not giving these people the transition from outside to inside, we thought was flawed. So that puts back all our programs. It causes them to have issue with bringing these people in, allowing these people to open up and disclose certain information so that they can begin programs, and putting these people in the programs they need to be in to be successful. So I heard something yesterday in the meeting, and they said specifically jails don't disappear social problems, they disappear people. And that actually struck a chord with me, and I know it did with Sheriff Marte. That really caused me... I reached out to Care Not Cages, Sidney Foreman. I want to bring her in. I'm going to try to work with her in how to really facilitate that process and really help us reach our goals that Sheriff Marte has set for us. So the interest of treating people like humans, and they won't react like animals if you treat them like animals. And that's really what we're focused on. I've got a whole bunch of information here that I'll try to get through real quick, but it's really predicated on giving these people that are incarcerated in our facility the platform to be successful once they leave. And we believe that will reduce recidivism as a result. So, real quick, we have 294 beds in our facility. Currently, we have 182 people, 161 felonies. The next number is kind of astonishing, and I think that's a credit to our judicial system here with the pretrial release program. We have 16 misdemeanors, which I've been at various facilities. That is some of the lowest I've ever seen. So it sounds like, and the numbers speak, again, we're new, we're still trying to figure it out, but it's clear that people are coming in, and the people that need to be there that are risked the community and really need access to these programs are being held here throughout their court case. The people that can come out pretrial and do things on their own and get prepared for the court case are filtering out pretty quickly, which, less people in the jail means more opportunity for the people in the jail to be successful with issues with overcrowding in most facilities. So it's worked out pretty well. We've got three parole holds, one out-of-county hold. So as of this moment, and the thing that we really wanted to touch on today was our general population. So currently, we have a tier system. There's minimum, medium, maximum classifications. There's people that require close observation and things of that nature. As of this moment, we have people that are in tiers, essentially. So you guys know there's two levels to the jail. There's a lower tier and a higher tier. Each day, the lower tier gets four hours out. The upper tier gets four hours out. So biweekly, that switches where the upper tier will have an opportunity to come out in the morning, make phone calls, and communicate better with everybody on the outside based on timing. But the issue with that is they spend about 18 hours a day on lockdown, even the people that are on close observation, maximum security. So just your run-of-the-mill person that comes in that has a disorderly conduct, makes a mistake, they're locked down 18 hours a day. That's not going to continue to happen, not with us. So what we're trying to do, and we're going to have to do it at levels, we can't just let everybody out at once, we're going to increase time out. It does two things. It humanizes them, and it reminds them that they have obligations on the outside of the facility, and it doesn't force them to live in their confined cell for 18 hours a day. That allows us to clean those cells and have more, you know, get in there and make sure things are handled correctly. But the second thing it does, it gives them something to work for and to be prideful of. You know, they're going to protect that timeout, so they're going to respond better to rules, and they're going to be more involved in programs. They're not going to be shut down. So, and that's real important to us. So there are some things we can't change with maximum security. That's for the protection of not only those people, but other people that are in there. So we're going through that. Now, with that being said, altered mental status, this is the first facility I've ever seen that has 80 hours of mental health services available on property. So they're there all day long. I've never seen that. So that's a credit to the community as well as other programs. So with that being said, there are 205 inmates from 6:22 to 11:22 that are on close observation. That's not too high, but it's not what we want. But with that, they have access to all these things, all these programs that we provide, and I'll get to these programs here. But we're really focused on quality mental health and facilitating that outside the inside. So now, list of services, I have it broken down into sections, and I'm almost done. So religion, we have Unchained Ministry, Shiloh Temple, and the Gideons. And we're really post-COVID, people are now starting to come in and say, hey, this is the service we provide, is there an opportunity to work with you? And we're meeting with those people. I can't even tell you the amount of emails I've gotten. So that's a good problem to have. Adult education, we have GED and Serve Safe. Serve Safe is one of the best things that we can have in this setting. It really gives these people when they're out and up in terms of employment and keeping a job and keeping housing and stuff like that. We have the Monroe County Public Library that comes in. They give library services, but also they do a vital program. Centerstone provides Helping Men Recover, Advanced Correctional Health Care, which is our mental health that I spoke of, where they have anger management, dialectical behavior therapy, CBT for insomnia. New Life, New Leaf is a new program they're just now starting to come back in. So I don't know a lot about it, but they have Read to Me, Growth, and Self-adequacy. So what that is, they teach these guys, men and women, to really focus on who they are and what they can bring to the community when they come out. And then our miscellaneous programs are Course to Change, Grade writing, AA, and Middleway House, which is a transitional-type program. So I just... I appreciate your time for us to come out and explain who we are and what we're trying to do. So thank you.
Are there any questions from counsel?
Go ahead.
I don't know if I have a... I don't necessarily have a question, but I have a comment. So I appreciate you giving this, and first of all, welcome to everybody, and congratulations again. And in contrast to our meeting yesterday, this is something that gives a breath of fresh air, and it is hopeful, and I'm... This gives me a lot of hope because I had many thoughts, but this gives me a lot of hope, and I'm happy to hear that, and I'm really happy to hear that groups and services are reaching out and you are willing to work with them. And I would be really interested to see how groups like New Leaf, New Life, because I know that that was something that they wanted to be a part of as well, to be in here. So this gives... I appreciate that, this breakdown, and it gives me great hope for future. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Munson.
I want to thank you for coming to the first council meeting of the new year and starting this off with the changes that you are planning for the jail. And like Counselor Crossley, I was heartened to hear about New Leaf, New Life because the element of transition from jail back to the community is really important, and New Leaf, New Life has been helpful in that regard. So thank you very much.
If it's still the same president, I met with her, and we had a lengthy conversation. So we knew when we took this on that they were going to be a part of the FUS. So that was set up way back in the beginning. So yes.
And we think that's one of the only things that we can do to lower recidivism on a constant basis. If we can provide structure on their way out, that sets them up to be successful on the outside. So that's what we're really focused on. So, and if you guys have anything, let us know. That's why I'm meeting with different groups. Everybody's got insight that I may not, and that's why we're here.
Great. Counselor Iverson, he's on line.
Yes, thank you. Commander, thank you for coming tonight, and I look forward to meeting you in person. I have two comments and a question for you, the first of which is, to your credit, I really was happy to hear that you've already picked up the phone, as it were, to talk to Care Not Cages and inviting them in. That shows great collaboration with community groups, and I'm really happy to hear that. And the second thing that I think that is important to focus on is that you said your focus was indeed quality mental health, and I think really that's to your credit and to the sheriff's credit as well, that that's a focus. My question to you is, I was wondering if Helping Men Recover is an ongoing program currently in the jail?
It is just starting back in.
Okay.
So they were in contact with the former jail commander, and they are dealing with our PIO, and that's our contact. I am going to meet with each group specifically. Yesterday, I received the actual schedule. It's pretty full throughout the week. I want to make sure that anytime we have an open opportunity, I can find somebody that can come in and fill those gaps.
Wonderful. That's a really great evidence-based program that Centerstone has worked hard to get, so I'm looking forward to that starting up again.
Thank you.
Great. And I'm sorry I missed you. Counselor Hawke.
Yes, thank you so much for being here. I've already heard some good comments from others, not just the council, about our new jail commander, so I'm happy to meet you. I think that many of us understand that some of the people that are in jail are regrettably bad actors, and so not everybody should be let back out on the street for the public safety and for their safety as well. But that brings me right back to it's not really the safest place to work when you are low staff. So my question is, how are you doing with staff? How many vacant spots do you have? And how is that working with the staff?
We just hired...
And pardon me. And when I'm looking down here instead of looking at you, it's because I'm reading what you're saying.
You're okay. Sometimes I have problems speaking up, but we have just hired four people. So any new hire through Indiana State Jail standards requires 80 hours prior to even hitting the floor of training. After that training, they need 16 hours each year, and then within the first year, they need 40 more hours from ILEA accredited. So we did hire four, but we are some time away from actually getting them on the floor. They'll hit the floor before the ILEA accreditation, but they do not operate without an FTO, a Field Training Officer. So we did hire four. As of this moment, I am not exactly sure how many we have open because we're still... We're all trying to dive into a million things, and I've actually diverted all attention into cleaning up the jail, which is an extensive project, not just for the sake of the inmates, but also for the sake of people that work in there. So I want to say six is the last number I heard, but some of those positions are changing with the new administration. So that's where we're at now. We are, for the first time, for our jail staff, they are excited that we have so many people actually working, people are getting to court on time, things are coming up, and we're being able to react to those situations and resolve them without issue.
Well, I know that the Indiana Code requires the sheriff, jail, to make a report to the executive, the county commissioners, annual report, and that report is also supposed to be going to the auditor as public information. And I would like very much for you to share that with us as well, when you are prepared to do that. And also to let you know that I believe the council will be very supportive about any of your cleaning efforts that, you know, repair work or whatever, because the new jail, if we have a new jail, or when we have the new jail, I should say, it's not going to happen tomorrow.
Right.
Or even next year. So we have to do what we have to do.
That's good to hear because there is a lot of talk for new facility, and it's going to take some time. And I was in the meeting yesterday, so I know it's going to take a little bit more time than some people anticipated. But as of this moment, we have an obligation to people here now, and that's really good to hear because things, we jumped into some things, and we started these cleaning efforts, and it's become a much larger project than we anticipated. And we've got to literally take things apart, clean them out, put it back together. It's good to hear.
Thank you for coming.
Any other questions?
Any other comment, question from counsel? Really appreciate you being here and all of the information. Look forward to hearing more about what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other departments who would like to provide an update at this time? It's time then on the agenda for council liaison updates. Do we have any updates from council members?
Since the next item on the agenda is county council organization and appointments of new liaisons, I don't really have an update to give that would be best done by the next person.
By the new person?
By the new liaison.
Okay. All right. On with the new then. Our next item is the county council organization, as you said, and state statute requires us to have our organizational meeting at the first meeting of the year. So we have two elected positions, the president and the president pro temp. So I'm going to open the floor for nominations for president. Does anyone want to make a nomination? Counselor Munson.
I would nominate Counselor Kate Wiltz for president.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council comments on... Or other thoughts?
I will say that in times past, I've just said present or past, but after what's happened in Washington, DC, I guess I won't do that this time. However, I will say that there are many times we will disagree on many things, but somebody has to be president, and I'm sorry for you that you are picked to be the loser.
The biggest loser.
Kind of words were never spoken.
That's awesome. I appreciate the nomination and would be happy to continue serving as president. It's been a lot, and it's good. It's a lot to learn and a lot to absorb sometimes, and I appreciate the challenge. So any other comments? Okay, in that case, we should have a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. I will now open the floor to accept nominations for the president pro temp rate.
Counsel, I move we nominate Trent Deckard to serve as president pro temp.
Yay.
Are there any comments on that nomination?
Just repeat what I said before, but right now, I'm just saying.
Somebody's got to do it.
Somebody's got to do it. That's fantastic. Yeah, I'm excited for this nomination, so if there aren't any more, do you have a comment to add?
This is the point where I urge everyone to vote present, but it's a real pleasure to serve in this role. I very much love it, and particularly getting to work with President Wiltz, who I learned from every time. We have a lot of good laughs, and then I enjoy the advice I get from her as we do all that. It's... The last week, as Counselor Hawke was talking about with everything, with reorganization and Congress going on, has reminded me how much we all work together across political lines and within political lines, and we need more of that everywhere, and I look forward to this, so thank you.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, now we move to appointments of county council liaisons and certain committees. And it's an important aspect of council organization. We appoint council members as liaisons to the various departments and as representatives on boards and committees, some of which are required by statute, some of which are not. And this really helps us divide, and I will not say conquer, but divide and perhaps understand better. I really appreciate the way we approach this, and this is an important part of what we So, sorry, I've gone on and on. Why don't you go?
Counsel, it's my pleasure to make the following motion to approve the following appointments of council members as department liaisons and committees. The assessor liaison, Hawke. Auditor liaison, Wiltz. Auditor liaison, Deckard. Aviation liaison, Hawke. BEDC membership, McKim. Bloomington Economic Development Commission, McKim. Building liaison, McKim. Clerk liaison, Iverson. Clerk liaison, Deckard. Commissioners liaison, Wiltz. Commissioners liaison, Deckard. Community Corrections Advisory Board, Crossley. Community Justice Response Committee, Crossley. Community Justice Response Committee, Wiltz. Community Justice Response Committee, Iverson. Convention and Visitors Commission, McKim. Coroner liaison, Deckard. Council Office Liaison, Wiltz. Courts Liaison, McKim. Courts Liaison, Crossley. Dispatch Policy Board, Iverson. Downtown Bloomington, Inc. Board, McKim. Emergency Management Advisory Council, Deckard. Emergency Management Liaison, Deckard. Environmental Commission, Iverson. Extension Liaison, Iverson. Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, Munson. Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, Deckard. Health Liaison, McKim. Health Liaison, Deckard. Highway Liaison, Hawke. Highway Liaison, Iverson. Human Resources Liaison, Iverson. Income Tax Council PSLE committee, McKim. Income Tax Council PSLE committee, Hawke. Internal Control Committee, Hawke. Jail Liaison, Munson. Jail Liaison, Crossley. Legal Liaison, Wiltz. Metropolitan Planning Organization, McKim. Monroe County Fair Board, Munson. Monroe Fire Protection District, Hawke. Monroe Fire Protection District, Iverson. Parks and Recreation Parks and Recreation Liaison, Deckard. Personal Administration Committee, PAC, McKim. Personnel Administration Committee, PAC, Hawke. Personnel Administration Committee, PAC, Iverson. Plan Commission, Munson. Planning Liaison, Munson. Probation Liaison, Munson. Probation Liaison, Crossley. Prosecutor Liaison, Iverson. Prosecutor Liaison, Deckard. Public Defender Liaison, Crossley. Recorder Liaison, McKim. Redevelopment Commission, McKim. Sheriff Liaison, Munson. Sheriff Liaison, Crossley. Soil and Water Conservation District Liaison, Deckard. Solid Waste Management District Board, McKim. Sophia Travis Grants Committee, Munson. Sophia Travis Grants Committee, Crossley. Sophia Travis Grants Committee, Iverson. Stormwater Management Liaison, Hawke. Surveyor Liaison, McKim. Technical Services Liaison, McKim. Treasure Liaison, Hawke. Veteran Affairs Liaison, Deckard. Waits and Measures Liaison, Wiltz. Women's Commission, McKim. Youth Services Bureau Liaison, Iverson.
Thank you.
Second.
Oh, yes. Are there any council comments on the list just read by Counselor Deckard? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
Yes. Just as a reminder to the public or anyone who is listening, the liaison is one who needs to understand the budgets and assist with questions. But we also know that all seven of us have a major responsibility to understand all of the budgets as best we can. And the department heads need to understand that if we contact them with a question, or we stop by to visit with them, I believe we'll always be welcome because the department heads all want to feel like we know what they're doing, that we understand the importance of their department. And so I encourage all of us to be very active with all of the departments, as I will continue to try to be.
Thank you. It's a good reminder. Any other comments or questions? All right, great. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And the next item is the appointment of citizen members to certain boards and commissions. And this too is one that is really important and exciting for us, really how we are able to connect with the community and be advised by the community in a lot of cases. We do have two vacancies even after we make these reappointments, and I just wanted to point that out. The Environmental Commission has an opening, and the Sophia Travis Grants Committee also has a vacancy. So if there are any members of the public who have an interest in serving, please reach out to our council office. And there is an application on the county government webpage as well, under boards and commissions. I'm sure if any of us were contacted directly, we'd be sure to help you as well. So that said...
Counsel, I move to approve the following citizen members' appointments. Alcohol Beverage Commission, Anthony Tony Satilli, for a term length of one year, expiration 12/31/2023. Conventions and Visitors Commission, Kirby Brown, term length, two years. Pardon me, I'm saying that wrong, I think.
No, you're right.
Am I doing right? The expiration is wrong, then. Let me just make one correction here.
End of term date.
Twenty-five, four. That'd be twenty-five. Yep, okay. Conventions and Visitors Commission, Kirby Brown, two-year term, expiration 12/31/25. Conventions and Visitors Commission, Natalie Walker, term length, two years, expiration 12/31/25. Environmental, pardon me. Library Board of Trustees, Fred Risinger, ninety-day extension through 5/1/2023. Parks and Recreation Board, Kevin Dogan, four-year term, expiration 11/2027. Redevelopment Commission, Colin McCarty, term length, one year, 11/2024. Redevelopment Commission, Iris Kiesling, term length, one year, expiration 11/2024. So, South Central Regional Sewer District, Richard Martin, term length, four years, expiration 11/2027.
Second.
Is there any comment or any from the council or public comment? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Motion passed unanimous.
Our next item is from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create new account lines and additional appropriations and fund 81539623, harm reduction of $65,197 in the personnel category, $300 in the supplies category, and $402 in the services category for a total appropriation of $65,899, and simultaneously amend the 2023 salary ordinance.
Second.
I think we have Lori Kelly, and it looks like Megan Miller is with her on Zoom. Welcome.
Yes, welcome. Good evening. This request is for our Harm Reduction Fund. This is a renewal for 2023. This program acts as an umbrella for services that support the health and well-being of those in the community with substance use, such as recovery tools and services that help to reduce disease transmission. This money will provide funding for personnel, supplies, and training and travel.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council to my right, my left, on light? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And then we have a second item from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to amend the 2023 salary ordinance in Fund 8126, Futures Title 10, Fund 8149, Futures Title 5, and Fund 8150, TANF Account Line 17801, part-time hourly, maximum range rate from $25 to $48, to allow the nurse practitioner to move from full-time status to part-time status.
Second.
Could you tell us a little bit about this one, Ms. Kelly?
Yes, absolutely. The Monroe County Health Department's nurse practitioner was set to retire on January 6th of 2023. We have submitted an offer for a new incoming nurse practitioner. Unfortunately, she needs to provide a ninety-day notice to her current employer, so she could start roughly around April. The current nurse practitioner is willing to stay on at a part-time capacity to be able to ensure that services to patient care are still being provided. Also during this period, telehealth services will be beginning with the grant agency so that we can still be providing full-time care to patients. And the salary ordinance is to raise the part-time hourly rate so that she can still continue to receive the current rate that she has. And in-house transfers will be completed using that full-time nurse practitioner line in order to cover the part-time hourly rate while she continues working at that capacity.
Okay. Are there questions or comments from council? Counselor McKim?
Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Kelly, I was just wondering if you could, in addition to this position, if you could give a quick summary of the status of other vacancies in the department?
Currently, yes, there is an LPN vacancy that just recently opened. Two of the vacancies have been filled at this time. We have two interviews that are scheduled this week for other vacancies, and two of the vacancies have not yet been posted for the department. One is currently still working, and again, that LPN position just recently was vacated.
So how many total vacancies does that mean, not counting those that you've already got somebody to plug in to fill?
Okay, so that would be five.
So, okay, so five unfilled vacancies right now? And I'm sorry, what positions are those?
So LPN for the Futures Family Planning Clinic. We have a temporary environmental health specialist, a wastewater sanitarian, and then the community health specialist is still currently working right now, but that will be an upcoming vacancy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions or comments from council? Counselor Munson?
Yes, Ms. Kelly, I just wanted to have you extend my appreciation to the nurse practitioner who's willing to stay and work part-time until new staff are in place. That's very important, and this is a great public service to our community.
Of course, thank you.
Counselor Hawke?
I just wanted to ask, is there some reason we're no longer notified? It used to be a part of the, I don't know, it was in the newspaper or somehow or the other, it was reported, different restaurants that were checked and so forth. And I haven't seen that for quite a while. Can you tell me, is that going to start happening again so the public knows which restaurants are checked, which ones have a problem, or what's going on?
Mm-hmm. So I have inquired about this. This was something that I was just recently made aware of, that I reached out to that division who covers the foods. And I am happy to forward that correspondence on to you. I am not sure whether this is something that's going to begin happening to get on a regular basis, but I do know that it was brought to my attention, and it's something that we are currently looking into at the moment.
Thank you. I know the public will appreciate it, and so this needs to be public information, not just sent to the council.
Yeah, that does seem like something people would want to see, perhaps maybe even like on a website. Other questions? Yeah.
I had a quick question, just to make sure for public viewing. Inspecting of restaurants is happening, the publishing is not. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Services at the Health Department are continuing. We are not limited in our capacity whatsoever. We are fully staffed in the Foods Division. It is simply just that information is not being posted to the public at this time. We were actually on track, and we completed all of our required inspections for 2022. The 2023 process has been up and running since the beginning of the year. We are also getting all of the new permits out to all of the restaurants, so that has not been halted in any way.
Thank you. I, for a brief second, when I was going through my notes, I was like, make sure that that is clear to the public. It's occurring, it's just the publish. Publishing, like a lot of things, is not necessarily happening right now with that, so thank you.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Molly Hetta.
Oh, hi. Molly, yes.
Hi. I did want to provide a little bit more additional information in regards to this particular request. I did ask Ms. Kelly to reach out to Indiana Family Health Council, who is our granting agency for the Futures Family Planning Clinic. That clinic is provided through, for, through grants of Title 10 in TANF. And I wanted to make sure that this reduction in the nurse practitioner hours did not impact our grant. And we did receive a letter from Kristin Adams, the president, CEO of IFHC, who indicated that the grant itself does not dictate staffing structure, but it dictates what services are to be provided. So they had indicated that it's a Health Department decision on how many hours that a nurse practitioner provides to the clinic. I would note that in reviewing of the contract itself, there is a clause on page 11 that says, "The amount reduced, the amount received by the grant can be reduced by the granting agency in its sole discretion." Although this may reduce, may, could potentially result in a reduce, reduction in funding, the alternative is that we would have to close the clinic, because if the nurse practitioner didn't remain on part-time, we would have no provider. And then, thirdly, after we received the letter from IFHC, I had asked Ms. Kelly to provide a document from Dr. Sharp, the health officer, saying that he was aware of this change and was in support of such. And Ms. Kim is going to share that letter on the screen. So basically, Dr. Sharp is summarizing that the, he is aware of the plan. He understands that IFHC is in support, or does not object to the plan, and that he would like for this checker. The final bit of clarifying information that I have is that under this plan to reduce the nurse practitioners' hours to part-time, we're going to implement telehealth. And what I wanted to clarify is that telehealth is not just going to be used in the interim until the nurse, the new nurse practitioner starts. It will be a service that, once in place, will continue even after the new nurse practitioner, as it is a service that is required by the grant itself.
It's required by the grant?
Correct.
I see. But it hasn't been implemented yet?
No. But Ms. Kelly can speak to this. They have been working on getting it implemented. I think the grant specifically says that for the granting period, which I think runs from April to March, we would increase our telehealth visits by 2%.
How much do we offer?
We have, we do not have any telehealth visits currently.
So 2% of none is?
Yes, but if we get it up and running, and we have one telehealth visit, we've increased it by 100%.
Infinite.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, can you tell us then when it will be a full-time available again there at Futures? And why do you continue to call it Futures? I don't know, buddy. I mean, if you're coming here to Monroe County and you're looking for family planning, you don't think, oh, I'll look up Futures. Nobody knows that. But, so hopefully we have it on the county's website, so people, new people coming to town can find our family planning clinic.
Yeah.
So the question is, when will it be full-time? So the question is, when will it be full-time?
Ms. Kelly, we didn't hear the last answer, I think.
Oh, well, the plan is for the new full-time nurse practitioner to onboard in April, and we do have information on the Health Department website that talks about the Family Planning Clinic. In addition, the clinic manager is responsible for going and providing informational sessions to Indiana University and other organizations throughout the community to be able to raise more awareness about the services that we provide, the clinic hours and such.
And so we're having, I just wanted, I guess this is my question. So in the interim between now and April, there will be a reduced amount of the same services due to a decrease in staffing from a full-time person down to part-time? And then, there will be the implementation of telehealth services?
Mm-hmm.
And that will begin in some way, not necessarily known right now, to augment, to some extent, the services. April 1st will have a full-time LPN, so the service level will go back up to what it is now, but also still be augmented by? Like, will we be expanding, I guess, is like hours and, or I don't know how it's measured in units of services?
So the goal is, yes, that we will be increasing our volume, so our numbers. The hours that we are open for an in-house provider will resume to Monday through Thursday. That's what it has been with the full-time nurse practitioner. With her going to a part-time status, she's going to be working Tuesdays and Thursdays. The plan is to supplement with the telehealth during this time on Mondays and Wednesdays. However, in April, when the new nurse practitioner comes onboard, telehealth would really pretty much just be kind of plugged into those gaps where we're not seeing patients physically in the clinic. In addition, the commissioners recently approved an agreement with the Path for You program. That is also going to help us to increase the volume that we're seeing. The Path for You actually provides referral services to us. Patients can go on the Path for You website and look up our clinic, and they can apply for visits that way as well. So we will actually, during this period of income, April, have three new ways to begin increasing the volume and the metrics of the clinic compared to what it has been.
Thank you. That was good. Yes, Ms. Kim?
I do have a clarifying question for Ms. Kelly. When Ms. Kelly and I met to discuss this agenda item on Friday, the information conveyed to myself was that the nurse practitioner was, made a conditional offer, but had not accepted the offer yet. So we were hoping that she would start in April, but she hadn't affirmatively said so. Is that still the case, Ms. Kelly?
She has accepted. We have received documentations back from the background screen and the urine sample. She has submitted her notice to her current employer at this time. So my understanding is conditional offers are always really submitted the first, at first, until we begin to receive those documents back, such as the background check, to then verify that information, to then, an official offer can then be submitted. That has just been the practice that I have been using since I have come onboard, because I would hate, because we have documentation that we have to obtain before we can move further into the process of onboarding someone. But yes, she's submitted her resignation.
Great. Are there other questions or comments from council on this item? Is there any public comment? All right, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim? Thank you. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
The next item is from our council office, and it is a series of very long, long things. We are doing our encumbrances for 2022 into 2023 budget year.
Counsel, I move to approve the encumbrance requests of the following departments from the 2022 budget funds to the 2023 budget funds. The encumbrance detail is set out on the agenda and as follows. Auditor's Office, Fund 11120000, Economic Development Lit Fund, $723,655 in the Services category. Fund 46150000, 2022 Geo Bond Debt Fund, $3,207,497.83 in the Services category. Fund 49210000, 46 Corridor Economic Development, Bloomington Township Fund, $5,364,800 in the Services category. Fund 8950000, American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Fund, $1,282,650 in the Personnel category. $3,754,628 in the Services category. $4,119,072.97 in the Capital category, for a total of $9,156,350.97. Fund 4920000, Westside Economic Tiff, $2,753,965.11 in the Services category. Those were all under the Auditor's Office. In Coroner's Office, Fund 100007, General Fund, $1,040 in the Services category. In County Council Office, Fund 10061, General Fund, $44,015.45 in the Services category. Employee Services Department, Fund 100309, General Fund, $67,134.80 in the Services category. In the Health Department, Fund 11590000, Health Fund, $10,000 in the Services category. Fund 11680000, Local Health Maintenance Fund, $15,000 in the Services category. In the Highway Department, Fund 11350000, Cumulative Bridge Fund, $29,347.6 in the Supplies category. $1,773,783.13 in the Services category. $308,758.58 in the Capital category, for a total of $2,103,217.77. Fund 11690000, Local Road and Street Fund, $35,277.77 in the Supplies category. Fund 11710000, Major Bridge Fund, $4,812,166.56 in the Services category. Fund 11760000, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, $60,740.34 in the Services category. Fund 11860000, Rainy Day Fund, $1 million in the Supplies category. Fund 11970000, Stormwater Management Fund, $780.89 in the Supplies category. $29,046.33 in the Services category. $203,096 in the Capital category, for a total of $232,923.22. Fund 49220000, Fullerton Pike Fund, $557,746.75 in the Services category. Under Legal Department, Fund 100277, General Fund, $250 in the Services category. Parks and Recreation Department, Fund 100803, General Fund Parks, $21,266.56 in the Capital category. Planning Department, Fund 10079, General Fund, $40,752.6 in the Services category. Public Defender Office, Fund 100271, General Fund, $5,400 in the Services category. Surveyors Office, Fund 10006, General Fund Surveyor, $1,645 in the Services category. Fund 12020000, Surveyors Corner Perpetuation, $54,000 in the Services category. Solid Waste Management District Fund, 8210000, Operating Fund, $170,156.17 in the Capital category.
I'm sorry, I missed something. Could you read that again?
Second.
Oh, my goodness. Before we ask for council comment, I believe the Auditor's Office had a change? Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you, council. I need my new total, so I'm going, I need to remove account line 36702, which is $35,000. That contract has been terminated. Line 36708, I need to reduce that to $300,000. Line 36709, remove. Line 48004, remove. And line 48005, remove. So the new total is $6,125,779.97.
Could you read the total again?
Absolutely. And I actually forwarded an Excel, if you want to throw it up.
Oh, that was great.
But the new, yes, the new total is $6,125,779.97.
Under Auditor's Office, right?
Yes.
And there's an Excel document that's adding it, so you don't have to take my word for it.
But it's written different.
Okay.
So what was the phone number, please?
The phone number is?
8950.
That's the phone number.
Okay. Counsel, I move to amend my previous motion under Fund 8950000, American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Fund for?
8950?
8950, 8950000, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, for a new total encumbrance of $6,125,779.97.
Second.
Ta-da! Great, okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
Yes, as I understand it, I'm just, it seems to me, I don't recall doing this, so.
Detailed?
In the past. However, I did not approve, as we voted on these during the year, there are some here that I did not vote in favor of. However, that vote has happened, this has already been budgeted, and this is just a situation where the department head now has a contract or an invoice, and they're just going to pay it with money that they had already been given approval to use. I am trying to make that clear, because there are things on here, one in particular for the HR department, that I do not believe I supported, still don't, but I will just vote yes, just to move forward with the accounting.
Great, yeah, thank you. Other comments or questions from council? I'm not seeing any, all right. Is there public comment on this item? All right, could we, could we have a, I'm sorry, I've lost my place, clearly. May I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
We are now at Item 8B, which is a review of draft, a draft Personnel Administration Committee Procedures. We refer to it as PAC most commonly. And I believe Ms. Schell will present that for us to take a look at.
Thank you, council. During last year, I worked with PAC with regards to coming up with some procedures that we can distribute to departments to assist them with regards to how to submit PAC requests with regards to job descriptions, amending job descriptions, or creating a brand-new job description. So, I'm trying to find it here. So in the PAC, I included what was reviewed by PAC, and this is what we came up with. And it's just kind of, it's basically an outline of if they need to create a new job, this is what they need to do. And so we went through those steps. It clearly outlines, you know, there's duties for the department head on how, who needs to be contacted. And then there's duties for the counselor administrator with, once they receive that request. Then, once it goes to PAC, you know, that kind of thing, you know, so it gives a clear outline of what's going on. So we have, you know, there's a, the procedures, it's create a new job description and a position. And so it goes through the steps. And then there's needs to change and update an existing job description. And so it goes through the steps. And then, if you're requesting an additional employee with a current or updated job description, that's clearly a fiscal position, and then it needs to go to council. So we went through all of this with the three PAC members, and it was kind of, I think it was in November, and so we just waited until now to just bring it to you as a draft. I wanted you guys to have time to look at it, make, you know, make any suggestions or changes. But this is something that, when somebody requests or asks, this will be one of the first documents they'll get, along with a PAC agenda request, kind of thing. So, and we've got WIS forms that have to be, which is mentioned in this document, so they will, you know, not only get this, they'll get WIS forms and that kind of thing. So, but I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to go through and look at this, and ask any questions. And I was thinking of bringing it back for a final review with you at the work session.
Thank you. I'm going to have Counselor Iverson speak. He has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I really wanted to take the time to thank Kim Schell for her work on this. You'll notice, what you see on your screen here is some language that really adheres this procedure to what WIS has laid out for us, and the ways that we're moving forward with our WIS study here. And I just wanted to also thank the other PAC members for their work on editing this document. And it's just really nice to see a document that's based in best practices that we're seeing coming out of our department. coming out of our departments, that's seeking clarification. And this document, I think, reflects, uh, what we're hearing from, uh, our different, uh, department heads on, on how we can better serve them to meet the needs of their departments.
I also want to say that I couldn't have done it without, uh, Ms. Turner King's, you know, help either. She, she was really hel- helpful with editing and making sure we had things, you know, all this, we didn't miss a step, so.
Great, thanks. Um, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, um, this is something that's not written in stone. If we, uh, put this out there and the department heads take a look at it, if they see things about it, if they think it's a problem, it might slow them down too much. Uh, I think we're all open to hearing what suggestions that make it work better for everyone. Uh, I don't remember who that third-party administrator thing was supposed-
WIS.
It's been a while since we looked at this.
That's WIS.
What?
That's WIS.
WIS.
Oh, oh, that helps. Um, but I want to make sure that, um, the department heads understand that each, uh, employee must sign that job description when they're hired. And if they change, if that, uh, department head changes that job description or says, "Oh, I think I'll have you do X, Y, and Z", more than what that piece of paper says that they signed, they've got to, they've got to bring that forward and get that changed, because that's what this whole system's set up with, is that job description. And I have concern that that may not be happening once again, so we- and, and who's supposed to be keeping the job descriptions that are signed routinely? Who has that?
Our process right now is when a new person, uh, comes on, the new job description is signed and included in the new hire packet. If someone changes positions, then there's transfer paperwork that has to be submitted. And with that, they also su- submit the new, um, updated job description. All of that information then goes to a, uh, email group, which includes myself, the payroll administrator, and the personnel administrator. And then a copy of that, uh, signed job description goes into the employee's pers- uh, permanent record.
Permanent record.
Not sure that covered what I was asking. I'm asking if you already have someone who's already on board, signed the job description, and then months later, or two years later, or whenever, the department head starts giving more and more duties that's supposed to be covered in the job description. And we just need to make sure that is happening.
We, we haven't crossed that bridge yet, because we were, have been in a moratorium with regards to changing any job descriptions. So everyone, um, at this point, has signed and updated their current job description based on what was approved by counsel. And, uh, unless they have come to counsel in the last year, everybody's job descriptions are in there. We have not made any changes at this point with, um, with departments, because we asked them to hold off for an entire year.
And that year has-
Has now passed.
Has now passed, okay, so.
And I've already had, uh, at least two departments asking what the process is. And that's why I wanted to kind of get this procedures in place first, because our first PAC meeting is in February.
Terrific, okay. Um, did you?
You can come in.
Yeah, go ahead.
I particularly, in a prior life, served on PAC, and I particularly appreciate this a lot, because I, I think PAC, in many respects, um, the whole process, everything, really starts with the best of intentions, but often becomes a real mystery for folks. And I remember as a new counselor, trying to figure that out, advise elected officials and department heads who, you know, wholeheartedly want to make a change, just need to understand it. And I think this guide helps towards that effort. And I think that's huge for our end and other ends. And, uh, as it, as Counselor Hawke said, as it is, if it's not perfect, we can always amend it. But this is, this is kind of smart thinking. I think counsel's probably felt less pressure on that need since we've had that year. But this will be handy, because that year is now up. So, thank you very much.
Are there other comments or questions from counsel? No, well, I, um, I very much appreciate it. Um, I have not served on PAC yet. And, um, I know I will someday. And, um, no, I, I think, though, that letting out what we, you know, have talked about in terms of the maintenance plan, um, and the way things should proceed, that were, that was recommended to us by WIS, is important. I, I mean, having not served on PAC, I just wanted to check, um, with those who are on that committee. Um, I'm, does this document have any changes from your current practice reflected in it? Or is it reflective of what you've been doing? Peter?
Yeah, let me speak to that, and I'll take first stab at it. There, there is, I think, important clarification at the bottom of the document, which clarifies, um, uh, the fiscal responsibilities of the entire counsel, and really clarifies that PAC doesn't make those decisions. I think sometimes there's been conversation about, um, you know, what PAC should do, or, or where their, their role begins or ends. And I think that, uh, Section C, which, uh, Michelle is, is showing right now, uh, I think this is the right section, um, really clarifies that. I think that's, that's an important clarification for our department heads and elected officials, um, as well as PAC. And I think what this does also is, it really shrinks down a lot of what came with our WIS, um, study. And there's just pages and pages and pages of data for our department heads to, to think about. And as we just heard from, like, the Health Department, for example, they're trying to implement a telehealth system. And I think this really helps streamline all that data into a really nice, um, readable and useful document. So I think those are the two areas that this kind of helps, um, uh, with what WIS had been doing.
Great. Thank you, that makes that, that clarifies it quite a bit. Um, any other questions, comments? Um, thank you for working on that. We'll look forward to seeing it again. And, um, that brings us to the new Item 8D, which I had to do with the salary ordinance, if I remember.
Um, yes, let's see, I'm trying to find it here. There we go. Also-
Oh, no, it didn't, did it? No, I skipped C. Sorry, that's why you look so concerned.
Sorry.
I apologize. We have to, um, review a draft of the increased compensation midpoint hire policy.
Now, I could not find that in the packet.
Oh, well. I apologize for that. I've been working with our new gal, Teresa, and I did not review the packet, so. Um, I can get that to you, we can, you know, wait and put it on for the next time.
Do you want to give us a, a general idea of what it contains, and then send it out? Or whatever is best for you?
Um, yeah, I'll share my screen again. Counsel had looked at or talked about trying to maybe change what?
Could you zoom in?
Oh, that's, uh, I'm working on it.
Okay.
About, um, trying to maybe possibly, whoops, that's too much. There. Um, fixing maybe the midpoint hire to be a little bit more flexible. And so, um, Ms. Turner King and I, along with Jeff McKim, um, worked on updating this. And we, we took a, a while, you know, adding some language and this kind of thing. So overall, I just called it, um, an increased compensation rate. I'm, I'm not married to that, but whatever you guys can come up with is fine, because it's, but it's no longer midpoint. So, um, what I wanted to, uh, show you is that, um, we wanted to see, um, the addition of adding not only a three-year possible, um, increase to incoming employees, but, uh, maybe an eight. We have had, in the past, um, some employees that we've hired that really could have maybe benefited from having that eight-year step. Um, and like I said, this is just a suggestion. Um, so we kind of, uh, put that language in there to give that flexibility. Um, it was also mentioned by, uh, some departments, as well as maybe, uh, an interest in counsel, to not only do that, but maybe to work on something with regards to being able to, um, allow our current part-time hire people. Um, and I highlighted that in blue, because I have a question about that, so. Um, but, um, I, I know, I was talking, sorry. So, uh, with allowing the part-time employees. And with that, you would need to be a current emp- part-time employee. You would need to be, um, working in that position for two years, at least two years. And that your, the job that you were going to would be comparable. And that, then you could, uh, possibly move to the one year, um, instead of starting out at base. And so, yeah, just look through this. Um, I did have a question. There was also maybe, and that's where I'm going to go back to this, where maybe, um, somebody was, um, did not get, or was, uh, did not get a midpoint hire, or, you know, the, the compensation rate. And maybe they could maybe come back and be reevaluated, because the department head said, "You know what? They, they're really demonstrating, you know, this." Or, you know, maybe they hired them, and they've been employed and, and thinking, "Well, you know, maybe I should have asked for more compensation." So this is just, you know, it's just trying to cover all, all, um, aspects of what we've heard from different departments, as well as the, uh, counsel. So this is just something for you guys to look at.
Thank you for taking the time with that. Um, do you, does anyone have initial questions for Kim? Understanding that we haven't really reviewed it, or, or comments? You do have a comment? No, okay. Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, Michelle, I might have missed this, but I think another important aspect of this policy is the request evaluation procedure, where, um, where the, uh, Counsel Administrator and the Personnel Administrator will try and make sure that, um, maybe not every single, um, request, uh, comes before coun- counsel, um, based upon the criteria laid out in this procedure.
I might have missed that, though, if you, if you didn't talk about that.
Yes, that is, um, also included, I've, I forgot about that. Um, it was mentioned that if the Counsel Administrator and the Personnel Administrator agrees that this is ju-, you know, basically a no-brainer, yes, this person deserves this, that we could, um, in collaboration together, is that this part right here? That we would, um, assign that, right there, okay.
Section B on page two.
Okay, yes, and then if the, if there's, um, and so that we would approve, um, the request if we agree, if we both agree. And then, um, but if we don't agree, then there's not a consensus, then we would bring it before the counsel to make that decision. And that's this section right here. So that was something that had been mentioned by, uh, a counsel member or two, that sometimes, you know, just, you know, instead of slowing down the process, you know, let's get the, this going, so.
It's basically delegating that. It's a conscious delegation of that authority, which is, you know, I, I think that sort of thing is done fairly frequently.
With the way it's written, both, um, counsel, both Michelle and then the, um, and Miss, and Human Resources, but I can't for-
Since it's time.
Yep. Thank, thank you. They would do independent, um, evaluations. And then if the result of those independent evaluations is that there's a consensus, then the, the midpoint hire would be approved. If there's not a consensus, the, um, policy provides for a clause that then it would come to the entire counsel.
Well, they, couldn't they have a consensus that, that it shouldn't be applied? Or is that not how it's worded? I mean, they could have a consensus or an agreement. They could come to either conclusion.
Right, got it.
The, the other thing to remember, and you can kind of see it on the screen right now, is that this doesn't eliminate the current process where any one counselor can still request a review by the entire counsel. So it's not giving up our ability to review it if we want to.
Right.
It's just saying that if both the commissioners, or, I'm sorry, the, the Counsel Administrator and the, um, HR Administrator both agree that this, that, that, uh, that this is an appropriate use of the, uh, enhanced compensation, and no counselor requests a review.
Got it.
Then we don't have to vote, we don't have to explicitly vote on it.
Currently, we have, like, um, the policy in place with regards to vacancies. And so when a vacancy becomes available, a department head sends an email. I then send the email. You guys get to review, you know, what's going on. And then you have 48 hours to request if you want it to be, you know, halted, that kind of thing, or if there needs to be more discussion. We have this similar kind of policy. So once this, we come to our decision, then I would send the information out to you going, "This is what we concluded, you know, does anybody want to see this, you know, at the next meeting?"
Got it.
You know, kind of thing. So that gives you guys the opportunity to see and make a request to have it put onto an agenda.
We're not giving up any ability to, to exercise oversight.
Correct.
That's right.
Great, thank you. Um, and so we'll see that at our next meeting as well. Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions for, or on this issue at all?
Well, can, can you make sure that you do, since it wasn't in our packet, um, can you make sure that's sent out to, to everybody?
I'll go ahead and send it out, and then that way, we can, uh, you guys can get it. It'll be, um, and then we can review it again at the work session.
Thank you.
And I, I do apologize for that.
Right, I'd like to have a hard copy of it, so I can go back and look at what we're looking at here. As well as, I didn't, I don't have any information on the liaison appointments, where, I'd like that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have that ready yet, so.
The, the other thing I think we should be looking at is, and we've talked about this in the past, that, um, people are getting credit for the number of years served, even if it isn't, um, when they move on to another position, even if it's not at all the same type of work. And so at some point in time, it seems to me, we want, might want to take a look at that. Um, and depending on what happens with this whole annexation thing, and whether or not we run out of money, we'll be looking a lot harder at things, and a lot harder at this constant, uh, belief that every department had, believes that every person they hire needs to come in at midpoint. That's just, yeah, I think we, we need to take a hard look at what we're looking at here.
I, I mean, I don't disagree with that in principle, but we did look at, when we discussed this policy, we did look at the, at the data as to, you know, how many requ-, what percentage of requests came in, uh, for the midpoint hire. And it was not even a majority, much less every request. It just, it, it's, it just seems like it's, it's every request, because those are the ones we hear.
Because it's from the same department.
But those are the, but those are the ones, we, we hear them. But there are lots of, of hires that are made, uh, even by some of the departments that I think you're referring to, in which they don't, uh, they don't have the experience to, uh, be placed into midpoint hire.
And I, I want to sh- uh, share one more, uh, screenshot with you guys again. Um, with regards to, um, how this has worked- With regards to how this is working, we added a section, it kind of, in the midpoint hire, it said, you know, that, you know, that it would come back to the PAC. But we made it more specific where the personnel administrator will survey the departments with regards that has been, had the midpoint hires and, and get information and then report it back to the PAC or, and/or council to find out, you know, if this process of is working out or if we need to make changes, you know, that kind of thing. So we've got a, here in section four where, you know, the report will be included and then reported back, you know, annually. We haven't, we have not been doing that at all with regards to midpoint hires. And this specifically, when we do this, I would like, you know, we want to have a certain, you know, we're going to do this every March, you know, and, you know, this kind of thing. So that we will annually do a report, so, to see how we're doing with these, you know, increased rates requests, so.
Questions? Comments on this? Great. That brings us to item nine, which is the approval of summary minutes as presented.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of September.
Didn't we have another item that we added?
We have eight D.
Eight D.
The one that I tried to do before. I'm sorry. Okay. Eight D. Let's do eight D. It's the salary something.
Which one do you want me to share first? Okay. All right. So as a, I guess a reminder, earlier or late last year, the council approved a retention bonus for employees that were going to be, that was going to be paid quarterly. The retention bonus was to be paid for the first quarter starting October, November, and December, and that payment was delayed to February to help accommodate the changes that payroll would be experiencing or processing the first of January. Then the second payment was to be paid in April and so forth. What Ms. Shell and I are asking is to amend the salary ordinance language, which I believe is displayed on the screen, so that it reads retention bonus supplemental schedule, paid out first payroll or AP claim. And the reason that is, is because we had some employees who retired at the end of December. So they worked until December 30th, they're no longer active employees, so they would qualify for that first bonus. But we can't process it through payroll because they're not an employee, so we would have to process it through an AP claim. And then additionally, we'd like to add the language that it would, the bonus would be paid following the quarter end. So the first, paid out first payroll or AP claim following the quarter end. So for example, the first quarter was October, November, December, it would have ended December 30th, and so that payment will come out the first payroll or via AP claim after that quarter had ended. So December 30th end, and then it'll be paid in February. That one's unique, though, because it's not paid immediately after.
And what we're finding is like the January 2nd, or the January through March quarter to be paid out in April, well, that, the quarter, March 31st actually ends after the first payroll. So we can't actually pay it before. So that's why we want to say after the conclusion of the quarter.
So just for clarity, that second quarter, March 31st, is in the middle of the pay claim, and I think it gets paid out on April 8th without looking. And so the next, the first payroll after the quarter has ended is technically the second payroll of April.
Yeah.
Make it better.
Yes, I see, I see what you're saying.
So we've had some departments calling going, it's, you know, the first payroll is not going to work, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Questions? Comments? Yes.
Only a comment, and then it looks like there's also a glitch in the text above that, the retention bonus, that there was something maybe cut off. It's explanation of why the chief public defender doesn't get the, the bonus.
It did, it is. I'll have to check that out. Thank you.
It's the only thing I can read out there. I can't read it when it's written.
So this is not reflecting the change that you want to make? What's on the screen is how it is now?
Correct.
Uh, do you?
It specifically would add in that title, it would read retention bonus supplemental schedule, paid out first payroll or AP claim following quarter end. Really, it's just changing the title.
Okay. Do we need a motion then to have that occur?
Okay, I'm, I move, we amend the 2023 salary ordinance to incorporate the change that was just recommended by Ms. Turner King.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion?
Yeah? The motion's on the floor. I just had questions on the whole thing, so may I ask now?
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, the, in theory, when you have a newly elected person come on board and they have then a new chief, deputy, or whatever, the other person that is leaving might still be in county government or might not be, because that's, you know, it's a decision of the department head. So are we setting it up so they would still get this bonus even because they were on board, but then they're not? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how all that's going to work.
So you're referring.
They get paid if, if, okay, the elected official gets paid at, on a different timeframe than the.
The elected official doesn't get a bonus.
Chief deputy, yes, what?
The elected official doesn't get a bonus.
I know it.
Okay.
I know it.
So you're asking about the chief deputy.
But the chief deputy, I believe, should be tied to that elected official because they wouldn't be there if it wasn't for that, and so they should get paid at the same schedule, but they don't. So I'm just wanting to make sure that we are not setting this up so that we're paying somebody retention bonus that's already gone. I don't know how it's going to work. Anyway, if you guys are all happy with it, well.
We would be paying somebody who had left if they had worked through that entire quarter. So that's actually the point, right?
Yeah, I think, I think this might answer Counselor Hawke's question, and if it doesn't, please let me know. So the first quarter is October, November, and December. In your scenario, the chief deputy of some department could have worked October, November, December. He would, that person would then qualify for the bonus for that first quarter, even if they're not the chief deputy or employed on January 1st, because then the next quarter begins.
Yeah, I mean, we just, that's, that makes sense, and that we, we can't pay them before they've.
Right, and ideally, the, the idea is that this is included with that, that pay following. So the person is going to receive it in the, in that pay where they were qualified.
They would be paid out then.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I believe this assumes that the person continues to be employed in county government.
Oh, this meaning when you say this?
Right.
No, this does not.
This does not.
No, that's why they're adding the AP component?
So, for example, if someone retired on December 31st, they would have worked October, November, December. They're no longer employed here because they've already retired, but the payment isn't coming out until February. So we have to provide a mechanism to get them that payment for the first quarter that they would have qualified for.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Are there further questions? Because the.
But moving, but, but moving forward, you know, it, it's going to be incorporated in their payroll. It's just that we've had this section where we moved it from January to February.
Because we delayed it. So, okay. Questions, comments, nothing else? Does this need public comment? I'm sure there's people lining up somewhere. Could we, do we do a roll call vote on this one? Yes, because, yeah, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
I'll say yes, but I really.
Counselor Iverson.
And I'll say yes.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And now we have minutes.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of September 7th, 2022, regular session and budget session number one, September 8th, 2022, budget session number two, and November 29th, 2022, work session as presented.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? Any public comment on our minutes? Then may I have a roll call vote on the minutes?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yeah.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And that brings us to number 10, which is council comments. I wanted to make a quick comment before I forget kind of thing. We have been working on ARPA appropriations, and not this meeting, but next meeting, we'll bring it back up again. So we'd need to have that on the agenda, and.
Are, sorry, you said, like a discussion regarding upcoming?
We can, I mean, it's too late to advertise appropriations, so we need to have the discussion and get appropriations advertised for shortly thereafter.
Okay.
Next time. The commissioner, Commissioner Thomas has revised the spreadsheet that we've used in the past to incorporate what we've already appropriated. And then also, I believe she's created a list for us to prioritize, and I'll, I can certainly follow up. We can do an email to kind of clarify. I had, I'm not able to access my county email for some reason this evening, so, but this is how, this is how we'll proceed. If you could take a look at what we share in the next day, take a look over the next week. So if you could have your response by sometime next Tuesday, that would give an opportunity for Commissioner Thomas and I can take your responses and look over them and be able to do a little bit more structured conversation at our work session. And I'm sorry, I don't have much more because I couldn't see my email.
Right, but it will be in the drop box.
Yes, it should be in there. I mean, I think that's, that's what, that was what was happening. Okay, great. So we will work on that, and then the only other thing I wanted to bring up was the, the fact that our city common council is meeting tomorrow and will be looking at a possible revote on the CIB, supporting the CIB. And I know a lot of us have other obligations tomorrow night and may or may not be able to attend the meeting. I'm not able to attend the meeting. I just wanted to express publicly my support for continuing to find a path forward that involves a CIB structure, and I hope that we can do this with our, our city counterparts. I don't have the, the magic answer to how that can work. I see lots of possibilities still, and I'm hopeful that their actions tomorrow kind of reflect that same optimism. So that's my pit. Usually I go last or stay silent, but I needed to get it all out before I forgot what I was doing. I see Counselor Iverson as his hand raised.
Yes, are we doing council comments?
Yep.
Good. All right, well, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the Indiana Sustainability and Resilience Conference is coming up. That is set for February the 17th at the IU PUY Campus Center, and this is the annual conference that connects who's your climate leaders to the knowledge, tools, and resources that accelerate climate action and resilience efforts in Indiana. If you are interested in attending, like I am, you can go to eri.iu.edu.
Thank you. And that's February 17th.
That is correct.
Any other comments from counsel? Counselor Cross, oh, go ahead, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I'm privileged to be serving on the Indiana County Council Legislative Group, and as I do when the state's in session, I spend a lot of time in front of the computer watching what's going on, ways and means met today, having to do with education, but there'll be a lot coming up. The bills are already being assigned, so it's, it's time to really pay attention to see what they're going to be doing that will affect us here. And so I invite you all to join me in my daily experience with the state and to let me know if you have any concerns you would like for me to take to my meeting, which will be Friday.
Oh, great, thank you. Other comments? Counsel, oh, you want to go? Counselor Munson.
I wanted to say at this inaugural meeting of our county council for 2023, that it seems like we're just the same old folks here. But we have four members who were elected and sworn in on January 1st, and it's nice to have you all back. Marty Hawke, Jen Crossley, Kate Wiltz, and Peter Iverson. Glad to have you all and to work with you for another several years.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and with new year comes new hair, so every year or every meeting, you might see something different. So there you go. I just wore this fancy.
That's awesome.
But I appreciate that. So, yes, and as it is, has been expressed, I do support our, our CIB efforts and want us to do what we can again with city-county collaborations and moving forward with the convention center. It's long overdue, and in my thought, I think I read something with the legislative luncheon that just happened recently, that that is a concern that is on the horizon with our legislation session that is upcoming. So hopefully we can do something and improve our city-county relations and work collaboratively. So I'm, I'm so happy that I got the appointment of the liaison appointments that I have, and if anybody followed those appointments, I have a lot of criminal justice appointments, and I did that methodically, and I'm thankful to have my colleagues approve me for that because as we are speaking of criminal justice and heard our new sheriff and his administration talk about things, this is really near and dear, and this is very, it's important. I think it's important to all of us here, all of us on the CRJC, or just in general, whether you are a Monroe County resident, Bloomington resident, or just somebody paying attention, all of this is very near and dear. And in yesterday's meeting of our Criminal Justice Reform Committee meeting, I had gathered some thoughts here, but I want to just kind of speak from my heart for just. I had gathered some thoughts here, but I want to just kind of speak from my heart for just a little bit. I look forward to those meetings. I look forward to coming in and seeing the crowd actually expand as much it has. In the past, what, seven, eight, nine months that we have had, every time we have these meetings, we have more and more people that are paying attention, which means that something is happening in the way that people are really focusing on county government. And that is exciting, even though sometimes what we discuss is something that is very hard at times. But I think of, and Counselor Hawke, I'm going to continue to use what you said a while back because it resonated with me and will continue to resonate with me. A while back, when she had mentioned that, you know, we can do hard things and we have to have broad shoulders. And ever since she said that, that has really stuck with me and will continue to stick with me in my efforts as I move forward on this county council. And what that also means with the Criminal Justice Response Committee. But, you know, last night, I left that meeting with a whole multitude of emotions, but I still feel like I am hopeful in a lot of things. I still beg at the mercy of, and say that we still need to have city representation, whether that is admin, BPD, city council, whomever. I know that we are not just dismissing them. I know that we are able to hear from them in many different avenues, and they can have input. But I do think, again, as we talk about collaboration with the convention center, this is also a good, healthy part for us to do with city-county relations. It's not like they're telling us what to do with our funds. It is just simply something that we can be learning from with each other. One of the biggest things that we also talked about last night, and I don't mean to bring this back up again, but again, this is something that I reflected on last night, today at my lunchtime, and we'll share this with everybody, is the lanes of everybody needing to make sure that we are staying in our lanes. And I take that as, again, one of the things that I had said yesterday is there are many different avenues and many different lanes that we have. Again, whether that's a bike lane, fee lane, any of those lanes. We, but we, we're all on the same road and we're all on the same path. And one of the things that really resonated with me is, can we just imagine if, in moments in history, where we all just stayed in our lane and not really just spoke, we just only had tunnel vision and stayed in our lane and not paid attention? Would some of us even be in the spots that we are in? Would I be sitting right here in my seat if I just stayed in my lane and was told many different things? I don't think I would be. I think we have input, and I think we can learn. And I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional because I really, when I'm a passionate person and I'm really near and dear and I'm passionate about something, I get very emotional. So please don't take anything as weakness or anything, because I am a very strong person. But we have it, we, we can learn from a lot of things. And input is something that is necessary. It is something that we can all learn from in history. It is something that we can learn from in these committee meetings. It is something that we can learn from, from folks across the aisle. And with input comes major influence. And all seven of us have influence. And other people in county government and city government have influence. And that's what comes with the positions that people have elected us to do, is influence, and we have privilege. And what we can do with our influence is take our privilege and continue to listen. Sometimes if we feel like we are not hearing, if another person isn't hearing what we're saying, maybe we need to take a step back and reflect, what is it that I'm doing? What is it that we're doing? Take a step back and listen. We all hear, because we can all hear the noise that's probably coming out of my mouth. Maybe it's noise to some. But the fact that we can listen, or we interpret what we've just heard, or we can have that input that we've just heard and move forward, and what we have learned is something that we can make magic happen. And we have a really big important part in our committee and a really big important part in our, our community right now, that we can really do hard things. We can really have broad shoulders. And we can really take this moment to collaborate, listen, and do a lot of good things. And I never thought I would quote a rapper on... But there's one line that I always heard as a kid growing up. And there's a song called "Me Against the World" by Tupac. And he makes a comment, and he says, "The power is in politics and the people." The power is in the people and politics that we address. We, the people, hold that power, and we can do hard stuff. So I ask, and I beg, and I plead for us to put petty differences aside, really come to the core issue, think of the big lane that we have coming all together, and let's do this together, and let's do this right.
Very well stated. Other comments? Nobody wants to go next, for sure. With that, we are adjourned.